All right, we will call to order the Edina meeting of the Edina City Council on Thursday, September 20th, 2018. Roll call, please, Clerk Mencken.
Member Fisher.
Here.
Member Staunton.
Here.
Member Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Protem Brindle.
Here. All right, thank you. We have an agenda in front of us. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Your Honor. We have had a previous discussion this afternoon about the Arden Park matter under item 7A.
Mm-hmm.
The mayor is not here this evening, and Member Fisher is planning to recuse, as he's had on previous actions. And so, there has been some discussion about deferring action on that item for tonight, which could remove, which could mean removing it from the agenda entirely, because we don't have another meeting specifically identified to table it to. Because if we're going to table it, we need to do that, and we don't have a meeting calendar yet from the Watershed District to be able to do that.
Right.
So, is it appropriate to leave it on the agenda so that we can have the tabling motion? But also, I do have a few comments I'd like to make tonight about that. Is that all right?
About what?
The Arden Park proposal.
I don't want to talk about it tonight.
We don't have a presentation for you tonight, but it's certainly your discretion about how you want to handle your public comments about it.
I guess I don't know why we would even approach it, since we'll put it on the calendar for another date. Comments can be made at that time when Arden Park is being discussed. I would much prefer to do that than to even open it for tonight. Because if we're not going to, if we have three people on the dais for Arden Park, this is a big project. We should, I mean, three people is a quorum of the council, but I just feel like we ought to have as much counsel up here as possible in talking about a project that size. And understanding, sorry, I wasn't facing my mic, but understanding Member Fisher's need to recuse, I think it's only fair to the Watershed District and as well to residents in Edina that we give it the best shot we can. Yep?
So, I'm not quite sure what Member Stewart's notions are, but what I want to make sure and say is, some people probably have fought through the rain to be here to hear it tonight. So, A, we should let them know what's going on. B, we did get some correspondents that had some good questions on it, and I would want to make sure that staff is looking at those, at that correspondence, and incorporating answers. I thought there were really good questions that were raised as part of that correspondence, and that ought to be part of the answers that we have at the next meeting.
That's precisely my intention. I just wanted to make sure that the staff was ready to respond to those things.
Right, because I thought there were good questions raised there, and I'm going to ask the same questions, and so hopefully that'll be the kind of thing that staff will be preparing before we next discuss it.
Yes. Councilmember Staunton, members of council, yes. Renee Clark and Ann Catrery have been working on responses to the questions raised by Mr. O'Brien and others who have commented. So, yep, we'll be prepared.
Is that what you were?
Yeah, so maybe it's fine, and right, I'd just as soon have the whole public know what kinds of things we're interested in.
Right. And so, with that caveat, I guess I'm fine with not, I mean, so procedurally, what are you suggesting? You don't have a meeting to continue it to? Is that the problem?
That is the problem, because the Watershed District is a partner in this, and they're integral to have at that upcoming meeting, and we just don't have their calendar yet about when we could put it on for. We're thinking we could do it in two weeks, but we need to make sure that that's the case before we start making that kind of commitment to folks.
So, what's your recommendation about procedurally? How do we handle it?
I would remove it from tonight's agenda and just direct staff to get it rescheduled, you know, as soon as we can get it rescheduled.
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. Got a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. So, we've taken that off the agenda. I still need the agenda to be approved then with the removal of Arden Park.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, great. Community comment. So, we invite anyone to come up and address the city council about a concern that is not on tonight's agenda. So, you can come to either podium on the sides, or if you have something that you'd like to show, you can come up to the center table, and our communications staff will help you with that. So, if there's someone who wants to address the council on a concern or something of interest to them, please come up now.
Yes, good evening. My name is Frank Lorenz, 7151 York Avenue South, zip code 55435. It's no surprise to anyone here that it's raining very hard outside, and when that happens in Edina, the traffic lights at major intersections frequently fail. That happened this evening at the intersection of 66th Street and York Avenue South. York Avenue South, which becomes Xerxes as you move north, is a county road. 66th Street is a county road. 50th is a county road. And for whatever reason, the traffic lights, the signals, the electronic signals that the county has installed around Edina, and I assume other cities, seem to be fragile. And I don't know whether they are unable to resist water, or whether they are electronically fragile. But nonetheless, the lights are blinking red at 66th and York Avenue South as we speak, and that happens frequently when it rains or there's a lightning storm. The lights go out during rush hours, unfortunately, at 68th Street, 70th Street. And I recall when I lived on the western edge of Edina, at Gleason Road and York Avenue South, I'm sorry, in any event, I wonder if the city engineer or the director of Public Works could have a word with his counterpart at the county and ask them what the problem is. Because the county's a big place. Their maintenance people will come out and do whatever they need to do to reset the electronic controls, but that may be 48 hours from now. They are not going to send a sheriff's deputy from the county out to direct traffic in a rainstorm at 66th and York Avenue South, I guarantee it. I'm not sure that it would be safe for the Edina police to try to dispatch somebody, because it either is or was raining so hard that you can't see. So, if you have a police officer, whether they're sworn or not, standing in the middle of the intersection with a flashlight, he or she is likely to be run over. But the county has put upon us some kind of a, either substandard or defective mechanism, and during the rush hours, this produces chaos, gridlock, and the chances for lots of accidents. And it's been happening for years. I mean, the lights at Gleason Avenue and Vernon Avenue South would go out every time there was a rainstorm going back 20 years or so.
Okay, we can, yep, thank you, Mr. Lorenz. We'll certainly ask that question. Okay, Chad? All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone wants to remove from the consent agenda? I know that we've got item E, which regards Pentagon Park North redevelopment. So, I know we need to remove that one. Anything else?
Item D.
Okay.
I'd just like to make a quick comment on that.
All right. All right. So, consent agenda minus items D and E. Do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of D and E?
So moved.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, item D, Member Staunton.
So, this is an item that talks about taking a general fund unassigned balance and transferring it to the construction fund, and then you indicate in the recommendation that there are some potential destinations for that money.
Yes.
What I just wanted to clarify is that we haven't made decisions about those expenditures yet. This would transfer it to the construction fund, and then we would subsequently make decisions about whether we authorize use of that money for those other projects.
Member Staunton, members of council, that's correct. So, you're not approving a contract tonight, but what you are doing is setting, you're setting a budgeted number like any other budgeted number.
Here, it's just transferring it into a different fund.
Right.
And we've done this every year.
We do it every year.
So, we take the money at the end, we put it in a construction fund, and then we have our decision to make as a council about what to do with that ultimately, and how we can spend that money. We could save it, we could spend on debt, we can put it to projects that we're working on. Those are decisions that are made another night.
What's more typical is you've done this decision typically in July, or maybe early August, and so it's a little later in the season than it has been in previous years. But this is a decision we make every year.
And why is it later this year than previous years?
Because we were just, it just kept moving back as we were trying to get the budget ready in the CIP.
So, nothing other than just, we didn't get to it until this point, and it's part of what we need to do before the end of the year.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's by, this transfer is a council action, it's not just a staff action.
Okay, very good. Well, if there's no further discussion, I would move approval.
All right, second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of item D, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item E, I'm going to go right to Manager Neal for item E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item E is the item, Resolution 2018-63, that proposes to deny final rezoning, final plat, overall development plan, et cetera, for Pentagon Park North. This has been on your schedule. There was a plan to act on it at our last meeting. We tabled it to this meeting. It's important that you know that the period for you to make a decision on this item expires tonight. But we'll talk a little bit about why that could change. But at 4:02 this afternoon, we received a proposal from Chase Real Estate asking us to reconsider and making us a slightly different proposal offer than they had previously. From a staff standpoint, we don't think this is sufficiently significant enough to change our minds about how we feel about the proposal, but we did not feel it was right for us to withhold it from you. So, we did tell the developer that we would put this in front of you. We also told them that we wouldn't be recommending that you do it. But from that point, I want to pivot here and ask if Director Teague or our city attorney would add a little bit more explanation to what I've told you already. Mr. Teague?
Yes, thank you, members of the council. So, what the applicant is requesting, and this came in at 6:18 after the initial four o'clock email, a request to extend the 120-day review period for 14 more days. That would put it on the August, or October, first meeting in October, I believe it's the second. That only allows staff, literally till next week, to work out all the outstanding issues. That's just not enough time. There's a lot of outstanding issues. So, staff would continue to recommend denial of the request.
Questions for staff, comments. Member Staunton.
So, is this a new proposal, or is it a request to talk about other alternatives?
There's no new plans that have been submitted. The plans are still the originally submitted final development plans. The only change is they're suggesting that they would meet the affordable housing policy. We don't know the details specifically of how that would work out, but there's no changes that have been made to address those conditions that the council had talked about at the preliminary approval.
Except for the affordable housing. That was one of the conditions.
Correct.
Right.
Well, you know, with only four of us here tonight, we've spent a lot of time on this project. We've made a lot of efforts to try to make something happen here before it's denied. I don't see what the harm of another 14 days is if we can have a full council, and if there is some other, if the indication is that there's some other proposal here, or the potential of some modification that might satisfy our conditions, I'd be open to hearing that anyway.
Member Fisher.
I agree completely. The housing, affordable housing was, in my interpretation, was one of the biggest barriers. And there were things that the team was working on that they were going to be making improvements on after we got all that worked out. So, I guess I don't want to just jettison all of the work that's been done to this point, or, you know, if we can, you know, if nothing happens in 14 days, nothing happens in 14 days. But I'd at least like to have the opportunity to see what is changed, and, you know, is there a potential?
Member Stewart.
I would, I likely acquiesce to the intentions of my fellow colleagues. One of the things that, and one of the reasons I'm tempted to just say, let's just vote no on this and do that tonight, is I really want to send a message to developers all down the line that this is not the way we want things done. We really don't want these last minute, literally last hour hail mary passes to try to keep something alive that has clearly been well below our standards up to this point. And I think they've been so far off of our requirement on affordable housing that this is not a tweak. This would have to be a major overhaul. And so, I would, my inclination is to vote no, to actually approve the decline tonight, because I just don't want to have developers think this is okay to do it this way. It's not. This last-minute stuff, this putting our staff in a situation where they aren't going to have time to properly vet the changes whenever those come, and we don't know when they will come. I just think it puts our staff in an unfair position, and I think it does not allow our citizens to offer their input to those changes, too. So, I'm inclined to say, this is not the right way to do this. They can come back with a new proposal sometime in the future, but this is not the right way to do this.
Well, I came here prepared to vote in favor of denial. The affordable housing piece is a concern. I mean, we hear from the developer that they're working out an agreement with an affordable housing developer. We talked to that developer, and they just shrugged their shoulders and say, "Well, I know we're talking, but I feel like we're getting two different stories." That the affordable housing developer, I don't get the idea that the talking is as far down the road as the developer would like to make us understand, or think. So, I'm of a mind to say, you know, we've got a master development agreement. It was signed in 2014, and there are requirements in that master development agreement that were not met. They're not met. And that's where my denial starts. They're not met. So, is this a developer who is, if we continue to work with them, who we can count on? I don't think so. I mean, the master development agreement is there, and it was actually the city that had to call his attention to the fact that he's out of compliance with the master development agreement. So, once he scrambled and put something together, this is where we are. And where we are is with a proposal that, pardon me, but is cobbled together to try to meet what is agreed to in the master development agreement, and at the same time, provide affordable housing. And gee, if we really have to, if our back is against the wall, maybe we'll comply with the policy. No, that's not how we do business. I couldn't agree more. That is not how we do business. We enter into a partnership. We have a relationship. What gets built here stays here. That relationship is part of what gets built here. So, if we can't rely and count on each other and trust each other, there isn't, there isn't any reason to extend this for 14 days. So, I would entertain a motion. I'll take a look at it. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2018-63 in denial of the final rezoning, final site plan, the overall development plan, preliminary final plat for Pentagon North.
So moved.
Okay. I'll second it. Further discussion, Member Fisher.
So, I can't dismiss the frustration. I feel the same frustration. I think what's, and I think we all know that this is a very complicated situation with a master developer, and then the developer that's trying to achieve this project. And while it's really annoying and frustrating and everything else, I think that, and I'm trying to read through this document here on the desk in front of me, and, you know, I think Chase is trying to meet all of our requirements. And yes, this has been messy. Yes, it's been last minute in this case. But beyond the frustration, sometimes I feel like you have to sit back and say, well, what is it we're trying to achieve at the end of the day? And if we achieve everything we're trying to achieve, though it's been frustrating and everything else, that's something. I get the sending the message. That's also important, but I'm just looking at what we're trying to do with infrastructure, Fred Richards Park, the entrance to it, and everything else. And this is an opportunity to do it. This is an opportunity to create affordable housing, no matter how messy it was to get there. And I just, I don't know, I just don't know today. I mean, yeah, we could pass the resolution and in a year or so, see if there's another opportunity. But it just feels like 14 days isn't too much to figure out if there's something here.
And my concern is the process, that in 14 days, we don't know when they're even going to get the new proposal, and staff will need to review it and respond to it. Since it's likely to be, in my opinion, if it's having a chance of passing, it's likely to be a very substantial change. I'd like to have the public have a chance to comment on that. I just don't see how we can have that process have integrity in that amount of time. That's my concern.
And actually, that's a good point. As I'm sitting here, it's like, well, wait a minute. They've, so there's a signed document here saying the developer has given us 14 days. So, there's no, we can't get in trouble in terms of, the project's not automatically approved because we didn't make a decision. We could give them, we have 14 days in which they could actually give us a reasonable extension to have it looked at, and that could be the deal. And...
And I guess if that's where we're going, I could acquiesce to that. But I'm not feeling comfortable. The fact that they even only offered 14 days, just, it strikes me as wrong. And it doesn't feel like a good faith effort to get this thing resolved, and resolved in a proper way that works for the city.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Member Staunton.
So, they've given us the extension for 14 days.
If we accept it.
You have to accept the extension.
We have to accept it.
So, we would need a motion to accept the extension?
That's right.
Well, I'm gonna, it's clear to me that two of our colleagues are not interested in the extension, and I don't want to have it automatically denied, so I'll approve the denial.
If Member Fisher's point, that the 14 days could be used to actually then create a reasonable process that would have integrity, I could acquiesce to that. I wanted to acknowledge that that might work, but right now, it doesn't feel to me like that's where it's headed.
And I want to say, I make no comment on the merits of this. I haven't even read it.
No.
I don't even know what they're proposing.
We had nothing really to react to in terms of the actual proposal.
Right. We had, you know, this is a project that's been in the works for a long time, and we've all, the developer and the city and staff have put a lot of effort into it. And if folks are, and we have four members instead of five, if we're going to wait until the next meeting and make a final decision.
And I fear that future developers might say, oh, we know how to deal with this with Edina. We'll just wait till the last minute and see if we play chicken with them if it works.
All right. Well, understanding that if we do not vote on this tonight, it's automatically approved, then we are going to call the question. All right. So, all in favor of Resolution 2018-63 to deny the final rezoning, final site plan for Pentagon Park North, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The motion passes, and so we'll go on from here and look at the future of Pentagon North and see what happens there. On behalf of the council, I do want to, Joe, thank you. You have been a stalwart representative of this languishing project, and appreciate your professionalism, and appreciate the chance to get to know you a little bit in this project.
And we hope we see you back here again, despite the outcome of tonight.
Thanks so much. All right. That concludes the consent agenda, and we are going to move on to special recognitions and presentations. This is one of my personal favorite meetings of the year, where we get to see some of the amazing creativity of our residents. And we have Katie Lox here this evening with us. And we have Katie Lox here this evening with us.
Councilmembers, it is Katie Lox, designer here at the City of Edina. Tonight, I have the pleasure of announcing the winners of the 2018 Images of Edina photo contest. First, just a little bit of background about the contest. The city established Images of Edina in 2004 to recognize and collect photographs that capture Edina as a place for living, learning, doing business, and raising families. The city and Edina Magazine cosponsored the event this year, and Angela Johnson from Edina Magazine is here tonight. Every year, residents and employees who work in Edina are invited to submit their favorite photos, taken over the last year in our community. The photos are then judged on many aspects, including subject matter, clarity, composition, Edina relevance, and overall impact. This year, we had 84 submitted photos. A judging panel of communications professionals voted on the winning photographs in five categories. There was also an online vote on Edina Magazine for the Reader's Choice Award. Of the category winners, one photo was chosen as the best in show, and we will reveal that tonight. So, on to the winners. The first category is activities and events, and the winner is Suzanne Wertham-Russman for Ice Diamond's Braemar Ice Show 2018. I'm pretty sure Suzanne couldn't make it tonight, but congratulations. The next category is business, and the award goes to Lisa Asp for the Calm After the Storm. Is Lisa here tonight? Oh, yay! Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next category is people, and the award goes to Melissa Hunzelman for her photograph, Little Fish.
Is the subject of this photo in the audience?
Yes.
She should come up and have a picture taken with us. We'd love to have you.
An unwilling public participant. Little fish is growing.
The next category is places in Edina, and the award goes to Gerald Wilson-Silvarage for Everything is Beauty, But Not Everyone Sees It Confuses. And in the plants and animals category, the award goes to William Webb for a beautiful Lake Edina wood duck.
Sort of a regular for this.
I think Bill's got a shelf full of these.
And next, we have the Reader's Choice Award, which was voted on Edina Magazine, and it goes to Mary Vanderwald for The Path Ahead. Is Mary here tonight? Congratulations, Mary. And last but not least, we have the Best in Show Award, which goes to Gerald Wilson-Silvarage. So, everyone, be sure to have your camera ready this year to get some good shots for the following year, and that includes you, council members. Winners, thank you for being here tonight. Congratulations on your great photos.
Thank you so much. The photos are beautiful. I don't know how you pick best in show from those. That's just amazing. Congratulations to everyone. All right. And we have a second presentation, and that is from Partners in Energy. This is a partnership between Excel Energy and the City of Edina. And is there, are there other partners? Or is it between Excel and?
Center for Energy and Environment.
And Center for Energy and Environment. Thank you. And so they've been working together as a collaboration. And so, Edina resident and member of the Partners in Energy Group and a member of our Energy and Environment Commission, Carolyn Jackson will give us the report.
Thank you very much. As Member Brindle said, my name is Carolyn Jackson, and I'm the chair of the Energy and Environment Commission here in Edina. But back in 2015, I was just somebody with an idea. So I went to a conference, and the Center for Energy and Environment gave a presentation. And they said, "Hey, we've got a new program where cities can save money and save energy." I'm like, "That's a great idea." I grabbed the paper, I ran over to City Hall here and gave it to one of the staff members, and the next thing I know, there's a call for members of the community to be a part of Partners in Energy. And so I signed up. And you can see all of us here in this photo. We were a nice group. We had a lot of different representatives. We had Excel Energy, we had Center Point Energy, we had some local business people, we had, the schools were represented, and a whole bunch of citizens. And Member Stone was part of our group as well. So that's who we were. So that, we were sort of charged, and you'll see Sarah Zarin is in the center of that picture. She was chair of the Energy and Environment Commission at the time. And she made it very clear that the City of Edina had taken a stand that we were going to reduce energy greenhouse gas emissions 30% by 2025. So this was really an opportunity for us to jumpstart that process. And I know you all had been asking for ways to do that. So we took our charge very seriously. We, Excel gave us a lot of data, and the Center for Energy and Environment. This chart really stuck out. If you look at it, first of all, energy is the biggest producer of greenhouse gases in our city here. So that's where we got our focus on. And then we looked at electricity use. And you can see in here, the little purple zone is the municipal, yellow is public schools, the dark green is residential, and the pale green is commercial and industrial. So even if the city itself were to go to zero, we would have very little impact on our greenhouse gas emissions. So this really drove our decision-making process. We spent a lot of time, probably three-quarters of our time, figuring out, who did we want to interact with in order to reach our goals? And this really drove it, that the city and the schools are public entities, the residential people have a lot of control over your own home, but the commercial industrial, which is the biggest contributor, was the most complicated of all. So we started out by writing out a vision. Edina's residents, schools, business, and government will successfully reduce the community's greenhouse gas emissions 30% by the year 2025 through strategies and actions that are sustainable, practical, and measurable. So we broke it down through residents, government, and business, and schools kind of got rolled into the businesses because they're a separate entity, we don't have control over them, but they are, they do have a different decision-making process than other businesses. But that was our goal and where we were headed. So then, what are we actually going to do? So we set some real specific goals, because the whole idea was to jumpstart. The city would lower its own emissions by 7.5% over the 18-month time period. That was the length of the contract we had with Excel was for 18 months. And we would reduce our greenhouse gas emissions 30% by 2025 from a 2012 baseline, which was existing city policy. The strategies were to look at the CRBPP building study that was already underway, which was a super extensive, and you guys have all seen this, but a super extensive inventory of what the buildings are that the city and infrastructure the City of Edina has, what their status is and what their energy efficiency is, or sort of their state of repair, as well as their energy efficiency. And then we would also look at trying to find ways to get renewable energy for the city. For the residential goals, we made a goal of hitting 750 homes and encouraging them to take an energy action savings, and to double the number of subscribers to wind source, and to double the average subscription within 18 months. And basically, to simplify it, use more wind energy. And Excel had a program for doing that. And the strategy was to use the city communications to get to that, to outreach, and to do events. And so we really had two things. One is to reduce the amount of energy we use, and of the energy, electricity specifically that we use, to translate that into renewable energy. The business was to reduce or offset 2% of electricity usage annually. And we looked at this a lot of different ways, both through policy and engagement. This was really the most difficult. We had a list of about 4,000 businesses here in the city, and how do you reach them? Who's the decision-maker? And a lot of the energy we put into was looking at that, and then looking at policy ideas that would come out of that process. So, looking at the CRBP, CRBPP study, you can see this interesting graph has, the bottom axis is the average energy use, or the energy use index, and then going up and down is the facility condition. And then the size of the circle is the area. So you can look at, the Art Center is very small, but very old and inefficient use of energy. Edinburgh, this is before the recommissioning of it. It would move down to the lower left-hand. So the goal is to move everything in the lower left-hand quadrant. The Braemar Ice Arena is really important, and you'll know, we're using the sustainability funds to recommission the lights there and to recommission the building. And so you can see why that's such a high priority, that even though it's in pretty good condition, it's getting older, and it's a really big use of energy. So if we can move that down into the lower quadrant, that's a big chunk of the energy use in the city.
Carolyn?
Yes?
Is the, is Braemar Field, the dome, where is that? Is that grouped in Braemar Ice, or where is that?
Well, there's Braemar Golf, but I don't know where the dome is on here. And once again, the energy use index is taken. Yeah. So it's not grouped in here, is what Tara's saying.
The dome, I forget which dot it is in here. The challenge is, it was, the energy use index was taken over a year, but as you know, it's only up for four to six months. So we would have to recalculate that one and replot that one to show where the true energy use comes, since it's only functioning six months, but it was calculated on a year.
And I think that's a matter of public record, the whole study. It was very interesting. We looked at that afterwards, but in the implementation phase. So for residential outreach, we were in the Fourth of July Parade, we had our energy fair, which a lot of you came to. Thank you for coming. And we had a few house parties and a lot of outreach to people in the neighborhoods about actions they can take to reduce their energy use in their home and then also adopt wind source. The business outreach, we had a number of things. We did a survey of businesses. Very few people responded. We created, though, a list of things that when people come to the city looking for business, building permits, we suggest some green ideas that they might have. It's not really a building code, but it's some, to let builders know that this is something that our city values. We had an event at Centennial Lakes for businesses that are tenants, that don't own their own building, and put together a nice flyer for things that people can do, whether or not they own the space that they're in. So, what was our impact and what did we learn? There's a lot of data on these slides. I'm gonna try to summarize it. For municipal operations, we did see some savings. When we get the Braemar recommissioning, there'll be a big chunk of savings. And basically, with the business, or with the city, we really want to make sure that when we make decisions, that sustainability and energy efficiency are the number-one priority. You could have really beautiful buildings that are energy efficient. And if you go down to Quality Bike Parts in Bloomington, their public space there is just magnificent, and it's energy efficient. So we don't have to decide beauty versus efficiency. And so we're making the recommendation that the decisions the city makes does put sustainability and energy efficiency at the top of the list. With the residential campaign, we actually saw a lot of actions. We saw 1,185. And these are things that Excel is able to get the data for, so that when somebody signs up for an Excel program, they can put that in their data and send it back to us. So you can see, we had a big leap in both the amount of energy saved, the megawatts saved, as well as the participation as a result of this project. It's difficult to reach residents. We had a movie series, and it was really, they were great movies and everything, but it was the same people over and over who came. And a lot of our events, people have already taken actions, and it's an interesting slice of the residents that are interested in this. And wind source was great, because we were able to get a broader slice of people to engage. But it is a lot of energy and volunteer time to do these events. And it did work, but it is a very volunteer-intensive process. So for business energy, we had a really hard time finding the decision-makers. There are people who own the buildings, people who manage the buildings, and people who lease in the buildings. And so the people who are using the energy aren't necessarily the ones who are making the investment decisions for buildings. And if you are a tenant, you don't have your own energy meter, so you don't know what you're using. But in the process there, we were very lucky that there was huge megawatt savings in the business participation. And that was because of, well, it's tracked by Excel, that people who use their energy design assistance were able to get big energy savings when they recommissioned or built new buildings. And you can see, that's where that big blue line jumps up so high, based on mostly, even though it was 1.7% of the actions, it was 20% of the savings. So next steps, we're gonna continue to talk about energy efficiency in the city. And we reviewed our actions. We're gonna look at things on an annual basis. But most importantly, we're gonna be coming forward to the city council with some policies that arose out of this. And I'll just give you a taste. We're working on a green building policy, and that primarily affects city buildings. So it gives the city a goal that increases over time for energy efficiency and sets things out. The City of St. Paul did something like this. It's a really neat building code, and it applies first and foremost to city buildings. And then if people get benefits from the city, we can ask them to apply that to their buildings as well. We're gonna be looking at a benchmarking policy. This is something, a way to reach businesses. It's a really good thing. I talked to a commercial real estate woman the other day, and she said, "People really want to rent in buildings that are energy efficient. It's good for their customers, it's good for their bottom line, they save money, and they have a good image." And so with a benchmarking policy, that's where the energy use of large buildings is made public. And so you can brag, "Look, we have low energy costs, we have a green building, come lease in our building." And that also bypasses our having to figure out the decision-making tree, because there's no way for us as volunteers to figure out who's making the decisions about energy in a commercial building. One of the other things that we're looking at is a business recognition program. Again, people are very proud when they make these decisions, and we'd like to pat them on the back and say, "Thank you for doing this. You're a good citizen here in our city." But the bottom line is, coming out universally from the Energy and Environment Commission as a result of this, is that the city needs to be a leader. And so we're really asking for that, that as you make decisions going forward, both in operations and in investments, that energy efficiency be top of mind. It doesn't have to be the only consideration, but it does save money. And taxpayers like that, and we like to save the planet as well. And then there's a whole appendix of pictures and everything at the end of this for your review. So are there any questions?
Member Stone.
So thanks for the great presentation. It's a great overview of a lot of work. I know I was participating at the front end, and you're right, this was a function of the, I think it was in the spring of 2015, that the Energy and Environment Commission came. came to us and said, we've got this commitment in our comprehensive plan to reduce our carbon emissions by a certain percentage and we don't seem to be, it's a great goal, but what are we doing to really plan our way there? And so this is a big part of that, as well as hiring Tara Brown and a number of other things that we've done. And it's great to see the progress. One of the things that we've talked about on the planning side is we constantly have, and I know Member Brindle is particularly good at asking applicants who are seeking some kind of an exception from us, whether that be a modification of the comprehensive plan or the zoning code, what are you doing for sustainability? And, you know, the problem we've had is we don't have very measurable commitments that we can make. And so do you perceive that these, this kind of green building code that you're suggesting for the city could be that kind of measurable set of steps that we could hold developers to in the situations where we're getting a new development and maybe there's a comp plan change or a zoning code change?
Well, that's precisely what the green building will, code will do. So that's a great question and we're hoping, that's the way St. Paul has, has looked at this. And it's a flexible thing that gives people options so they're not, you have to build a building this way, but it does have measurable goals for sustainability and recognizable terms and recognizable, well, like LEED certification is one of the options. B3, building, things that govern the state would be another option for buildings. So things that people understand and they know what they're getting into and that are recognized worldwide as sustainability measures. So that's what the green building code, part of, the big part of the green building code will be. So saying, this is what we expect, you have choices, tell us what you're going to do and how it fits within our green building code. So it is very much the give-to-get type of thing that we've been looking for.
Terrific. Thank you.
Other comments? Member Stewart.
Thank you. Carolyn, I want to thank you and Member Staunton and all the members of the Partners in Energy Group. This has been a huge amount of work. I think the work is fantastic. And it's not over. We're not declaring victory and going home. This is a great step for us as a city. But to have people with the interest and the passion and the spirit of service that they would work hard for our city for such an extended period of time as volunteers to achieve the kind of results and to help us candidly get what we had talked about back in 2015. Help us when we said to the Energy and Environment Commission, yes, we have these admirable goals, but right now they're just words. How do we create an action plan that's real, that we can drive toward these goals, not just hold them out there, but really put some effort behind it and put some leadership behind it? And you've done that for us. And so thanks to you and all the members of the Partners in Energy Group for that. As I say, it's a, it's an important first step. We need to do what we can to leave our, our community and our world better for our children and our grandchildren. And I'm glad that we've taken these steps. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much and on behalf of the entire team. And I'm going to give you the response that we get at the Energy and Environment Commission and that is, when we bring these things forward, we would love to have all of you be our champions as well for these policies. And we'll spend some time, and you'll be looking at our work plan and some of these things will look familiar when they come forward to you. But to the extent that you guys can stand up and say, this is the values of the city, we want to see this happen, that's be hugely helpful for us as well. So thank you very much.
Member Fisher.
I just wanted to thank you and the, and the group as well. And as far as anything else I would say, I would say I would repeat exactly what Council Member Stewart just said. I think you really put it very well.
Terrific. Thank you.
You know, just a couple of final comments. I recently became aware of carbon offsets, which are, it's fascinating. It's a way for, let's say, in, in our community, corralling the business community to try to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Carbon offsets, to the degree that we can make it known, I'm not sure how we would do this, but it's like buying a share of something. But the dollars that you pay go to support projects that are reducing greenhouse gas emissions over, overall. So your dollars don't go in somebody's pocket. Your dollars actually go toward projects with, that have the mission of reducing GHG emissions. So it's, for me, an extremely new field, but it is one that would allow us to look at an area that while it's going to be tough for us to regulate, this is something that if we can't regulate them, we might be able to entice them to invest in something that, that affects the overall reduction of emissions. General Motors is doing this. Airlines are doing this. Some cities are doing this. And so it, they use that as part, part of their own formula of their own reduction. So it is, like I said, it's new. It's new enough that that's all I know. But, and I couldn't even discuss it intelligently beyond this. But, but it has caught my interest and so it's something that I'll continue to, to learn about. But maybe that is something that we can learn more about as well. Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, there was a question that I heard. So in this report are some goals and some, maybe some next steps. How are we going to track those and, and ensure that we're successful at what is in, at accomplishing what is in the report?
Well, we are kind of viewing this as that jump start kind of thing. I think you'll see as we go forward with our, our work plan, that really it's the policy take, there are two big takeaways, new policy and then also leadership by the city. And I can't stress that strongly enough, that we can't ask other people to take actions if we're not leading the way, saying, look, we did this, it wasn't that painful, we saved a lot of money. Do it our way. But if we're not taking those steps, it's very hard to persuade people because it really is mostly persuasion. So the policies, I think, are the, the number one thing that are taking, we're going to be going forward. I think the volunteer time to do the other things, the business recognition program will require some volunteer time. But we want to make sure that people who sign up to be on the Energy and Environment Commission can continue to have private lives as well. And sometimes these things are very intense on their volunteer time that's necessary. So you may see that scaled back some, but we're doing Open Streets on Sunday. Come see us and we'll talk about wind source and, and things that you can do. We'll continue that type of outreach, but probably scaled back quite a bit.
Okay. Terrific. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to reports and recommendations. And we have two. The first is a presentation by Finance Director Don Yurum, setting the 2019 preliminary budget and levy.
Mayor, members of the city council, I believe City Manager Neil is going to give a brief introduction to the topic and, and I will take it from there with a detailed description of the budget and the capital improvements plan.
Thank you, Mr. Yurum. As you, you all have been through a budget process now and know that we have a, we, we operate on a two-year budget cycle to the, to the best of our ability. One of the things that we have to do, because the state doesn't necessarily officially sanction us or allow us to operate on an, on an official two-year basis, is that we have to come back every year and ask you to set the, set the preliminary levy, the maximum levy, even though we've had a lot of discussion about this in, in actually most of the latter half of 2017, when we were setting our budget for 2018 and 2019. So the act, the act that we're looking for from council tonight is to set the preliminary levy at the, at the level that we have previously approved, that you have previously approved back in December of 2017. We have not conducted a, much of a budget process this year, which is customary in the second year of a two-year budget process. We expect to have a robust process for the 2020, 2021 budget biennium next year in 2019. So with, with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Yurum and he can give you the rundown. You'll, you will, you will see a lot of this information, should look familiar. You've seen it before and we're just giving you a refresh on what we've already talked about. Mr. Yurum.
Thanks, Manager Neil. So tonight we're requesting that the city council adopt Resolution 2018-83, adopting the preliminary levy and budget. I'm also going to discuss the capital improvements program, as I had said earlier, but no action is necessary by the city council this evening. So in my presentation, so before you, there's an agenda and I'm going to talk about kind of the budget process and timeline, the 2019, 2023 capital improvements plan, the budget and levies and tax comparisons. So this is kind of an overall picture of the city of Edina's budget. You know, at the top, and this is for 2018, at the top, both from a governmental and enterprise fund perspective, the total budget is about $125 million. The highlights in yellow are areas in which the majority of the capital improvements take place. And I just wanted to emphasize those areas. As you can see, the construction fund, the utility fund, liquor fund and park enterprises. Our process is, is fairly complex from a, kind of an overall vision and policy perspective and how that ties into budgets and work plans. You can see at the top, there's a kind of policy documents. The capital improvements plan is one of those policy documents. And below from an implementation perspective, really is the city's budget, as well as departmental work plans. And work plans kind of drive the budget. As Mr. Neil has indicated, you know, this is a biennial budget process. We're in an even year this year, which is, which just means that we spend the majority of our focus and time on putting together the capital improvements plan. We update the operating budget if necessary. And this year in discussions with other departments, no updates were necessary. And in the second year, or the odd year, as Mr. Neil has indicated, we spend the bulk of the time working on the operating budget. Just a description about the timeline, as you can see from this, and I'm not going to go through each of these, but you can see that this is almost a year-round process for us. We're either doing the budget or doing the capital improvements plan. I would like to point out that at the September 13th meeting, the HRA approved their levy of $160,000. I also want to point out the date, November 7th, which is when we will have a workshop with the city council, specifically to discuss the capital improvements plan. In your packet tonight is a copy of the draft capital improvements plan. And I would encourage you to take a look at that and ask questions and offer your input as we go forward. And then lastly, the adoption of the final budget and CIP would occur in December. And earlier this evening, you approved the public hearing on the budget for December The CIP process, fairly comprehensive. You know, we work with all the departments, the division leaders, the department heads. We have a prioritization committee, typically a broad cross range of individuals from the various departments, who offer their recommendations on priorities. We present this information to the leadership team and they make their comments and recommendations. And then ultimately, the city manager recommends the CIP to the city council. You can see kind of the box around the outside is council oversight. For 2018 and 2019, the approved budget goals, and these are critical to the work that we've been doing. You know, the first is to maintain physical assets and infrastructure. The second one is to maintain service levels. Third, plan for connected and sustainable development. And the last is to foster an inclusive, engaged community. One of those items in the work plan, it came under the heading of maintaining physical assets and infrastructure, is to increase the CIP levy to $600,000 by 2021 through a combination of staged levy increases, as well as adding an equal dollar amount to the CIP levy when the levies for Weber Woods and City Hall expire. So in a sense, once those, once the debt is paid off, we would add an additional, an equivalent amount to the levy. So really no dollar impact to the tax levy.
So in other words, we would take what we're currently paying toward those levies and direct them toward the CIP?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
So we, when we look at kind of funding allocation, we really have kind of three buckets that we, that we look at. First one is fully allocated, tax increment, franchise fees. Those revenues are already dedicated to certain projects. You know, in the, kind of in the middle column, we have various transfers, general fund surplus that we can allocate to various projects. Earlier this evening, there was a discussion about the allocation of the 2017 general fund reserves. And then lastly, there are other revenue sources that are not guaranteed and they occasionally occur. For instance, park dedication fees with the subdivision of property, sometimes grants and donations and, you know, hopefully future general fund reserves. So as part of the budget message in 2017 and recognizing that the capital improvements plan, those projects without a dedicated funding source in the capital improvements plan were woefully unfunded, this strategy was presented to the city council. It goes back to increasing the levy over time, but also including the expiring levies, that dollar amount, and reallocating it to the capital improvements plan. The result of all this, by 2021, we will have approximately, we will have approximately $2 million for capital improvements projects, assuming we can, we stick on this track going Big spreadsheet, this just graphically kind of shows where the Weber Woods levy drops off and it moves to the capital improvements plan. The City Hall debt service drops off, that moves to the capital improvements plan. So for the CIP for 2019 through 2023, there were 233 projects that were submitted, slightly less than what, what was submitted for the last time. The dollar amount, however, has increased from 156 million to 194 million. And the largest increase is in buildings and infrastructure. I think the increase in the buildings has to do with the work that our facilities director and other depart, other staff members have put into that. And I won't say this correctly, but the BRCP project, the big building project. We don't have $194 million to spend on capital improvements. So as, as you can see, without additional funding, you know, these projects will be deferred.
Mr. Yurum, isn't it the case that we have already been deferring many of these projects for a long time? So the issue is, if we want to get started, we need to have a plan for that.
And Councilmember Staunton, that is...
I'm Stewart, but that's...
Stewart, Councilmember Stewart. That is correct. And this slide, I think, really kind of goes to that point about replacement and repair. So there's about $51 million in CIP projects that have no planned funding source. Buildings are about 32 million of that total. 99% of that, 31 million plus, is for repair or replacement projects. Couple of the project, couple of the buildings, Braemar Arena, identified repairs or replacement for that is 12.7 million. For Edinburgh Park, it's about 6.7 million. Parks is 17.4 million of the total. Fred Richards is 14 million of that. Braemar Park Master Plan is another 2 million. And as you can see...
So it's not just building, it's the parks as well?
It's the implementation of the Parks Master Plan, that's correct. So at the planned CIP levels, we'll have about 7.3 million in funding to allocate, but we'll need about 10... but we'll need about 10 million to do it. And as I said, examples of unfunded projects, Braemar and Fred Richards, repair and maintenance at City Hall, the fire station, Braemar, et cetera. A lot of the park shelter replacements and playground replacements are unfunded, and there are several technology projects.
Could I just ask a real quick question? Did you put the bucket out in the hallway tonight intentionally? Or was that just...
There's a bucket?
Is there water in that bucket? Okay. I just...
I think we got 15 inches of rain today. So this slide is just a graphic representation of the number of projects. So you can see the various categories, both from a funded and an unfunded project status. You know, the majority of them are in buildings and vehicles and equipment. From a funding perspective, the majority of it is in infrastructure, and that's really street reconstruction and that sort of thing. The funding sources, again, just a graphical representation of the funding. Construction Fund is, will provide funding for about $51 million. And you can just see the various breakdowns. The, I will say that there's a typo on unfunded. Oh wait, no, that's correct. And again, it's about $51 million of unfunded projects for, that are listed. So with that, I'd like to move on to the preliminary tax levy. So the overall tax levy is proposed to go up 4.6%. The majority of that is for wages and benefit cost increases. The city has, I believe, about 300 full-time employees, and then we have an additional 700 part-time and seasonal employees. So we really are a service business, and so that's one of our largest increases. Also increasing the equipment levy by $90,000. The HRA levy went up $35,000.
If I could interrupt before you go away from this slide, the 1.2% inflation service level changes and all other changes, what is that? I assume the wage and benefit is kind of inflation as well, but what, what's the other inflation?
It's for goods and services.
Did it just cost more to acquire equipment supplies, goods that we then use in whatever kinds of services we're delivering?
That's correct.
Mr. Urim, also while we're on this slide, one of the things that I'd be interested in tracking over time is sort of the headcount. How many full-time employees, how many seasonal employees? And I'd like to see if we can follow a trend on that and then understand if we've had to have increases where. You know, has that been in the police department in order to maintain levels of service? I just want to have a good understanding of how that evolves.
And I just piggyback on that, that to the extent we can get that in a longitudinal framework, so, you know, we're going back over 10 years to see what that kind of arc was, that we can compare with different trends in the economy and, and so put it into context.
Because we don't, and this is a pie chart of where the money goes, we don't have data for 2019 yet for Annapin County and the school district and the other districts. So this is from 2018. City of Edina collects about 20% of the tax dollar. The other pieces, the school district, Annapin County, as well as the watershed district, et cetera. Estimated levy impacts. I'll start with the second bullet. You know, the, our estimated market value is increasing by about 6.4% for paid 2019. This median single-family home has increased to $530,650, and that's up from 501,000 last year, so a pretty significant increase. With a 4.6% property tax increase, that home at 530, 650, would see a 6% increase in city property taxes, which is about $84 a year or $7 a month.
Can I just inter, I mean, sometime between now and the final approval, I just need a better understanding of how that can be, how we can be making our aggregate value larger, yet the increase in property tax on the median single-family home, the impact of that is greater than the levy increase itself? I don't, somebody needs to help me understand that.
We can show you the math for that.
Then lastly, this is just a historical trend of the median home adjusted for CPI. You can see going back to 2003, it started at $860, and for 2018, it was just over $1,000. So a very gradual increase based on adjustments for CIP. You can see that the median value home in 2003 was only $300,000 as compared to 500,000 in 2018. And then again, a comparison, which is the comparison that we use with our adjacent cities and other cities is against a $400,000 home, and again, a very gradual increase from 2010 up to 2019. So the next steps, again, the council has a resolution before you tonight to certify the preliminary tax levy. I need to get that to the county by September 30th. Based on input from the council, we will continue to work on the Capital Improvements Plan. We will present at work session, the draft, and solicit input from the council. The public hearing for the 2019 budget is scheduled for December 4th. And then the final action, final date to take action on the budget and CIP is December 18th. So with that, I would be happy to answer any additional questions.
All right. Questions? Member Stewart?
So just for sake of clarity, so people understand, the preliminary number, assuming we pass this one tonight, is not the final, of course, but we cannot go over it in the future, right?
That is correct.
Other comments? Member Fisher?
So we're setting our do not exceed number, and then honing in from now until the date we approve that. So just out of curiosity, because I haven't been through the CIP cycle, this would be the first year for me on that one. Do we, is there an opportunity to dig into it more, or is the, is it pretty much the whole structure where there have been reviews from departments and committees and all of that comes to us? What, is there a point where we have more discussion on it, or is that tonight? Or, and how does that all work?
Member Fisher, members of council, yes. We think that the process, the analytical process that we use as staff to sort of prioritize the capital spending of the city is, is good and is a solid recommendation to you. But, you know, you are, as the elected representatives of the people of the city, you, you weighed in on this decision. And we have that planned, I think, for November...
November 7th.
November 7th is, is a night when we'd like to kind of get to a point where we've, we've all have a common understanding of what our priorities are and sort of what's funded and what's not funded. We have a list of that and we will share that with you so you could compare, and you can see things, how, how we see them from the staff side. But definitely, there's, there's an opportunity to weigh in. It's, it's not necessarily tonight because you're not approving the CIP tonight, but you will have to approve it before the end of the year, and the November 7th night is the night when we'd like to do that with you, for sure.
But in terms of, and I'm, I'm trying to just project out a little bit, that because the CIP has a lot of things in it that are more personal to people, you know, like if your, if your neighborhood park is 99th on the list and you really want it to be first on the list, I'm assuming you have an opinion about that. And I'm assuming that the analytical detail that's done, you know, it has all of those kind of filters and what's important and why is it important? And I'm assuming that also helps not sort of politicize it, that it doesn't become a competition about whose neighborhoods get what and all of that, but...
Right. There are expectations that have been set by previous, previous CIPs that kind of roll forward, so we want to make sure you're aware of all those kind of decisions as well.
So there are, you know, projects that might have been sitting out there for a long time do have the potential to eventually rise up a very large list?
Yep, they do.
Okay.
Sometimes they rise up the very large list when something catastrophic happens in one of those buildings. And that's kind of the, the hazard of having them be delayed, is by the time we get to it, it's not when we scheduled it, it's when it falls in our lap that it has to be done. And Braemar Arena, and some of the challenges that happen with a facility that has so much technology and so much machinery in it, that it just happens. They're old. But, all right. Well, it's the CIP levy and the fact that in a couple of years, we could have $2 million in that CIP levy. That's kind of exciting because a couple of years ago, we had nothing. We had a, really, an unfunded CIP. So much as we have a CIP with a great deal of projects in it, to even be coming forward to that degree feels really good. And so, so knowing that we have some of these, some of these bond levies that we've had for the Public Works Building, yeah, the Public Works Building for City Hall, for Weber Woods, for a variety of things are going to be rolling off as we go. What we currently pay for, as, as residents, what we currently pay into those levies to, to pay off that debt, we will continue to pay, and those dollars will be reallocated toward a variety of things, including the CIP, or toward parks, or toward street maintenance or something like that, things that also need to be handled. And then we don't have to have additional levies. We just use what we have. So, all right. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-83, adopting the proposed budget and levy for the City of Edina for the year 2019, and establishing the proposed tax levy payable in 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Well, we've done it. So when I started as a council member in 2009, 1% levy represented about $300,000, and today, it represents $370,000, 10 years later. So, economy's moving. So, all right. The next report and recommendation is accepting various donations, grants and donations, which we do publicly in council meetings. So let me pull it up here. We have so many generous individuals and organizations in our community. This month, we have, or for this reporting time, the Park and Rec Department received donations from Mark Morris and Cynthia Rebe for a memorial bench in recognition of Arthur and Virginia Morris at Williams Park. And then the Fire Department received a gift of, gift of $100, that must be $100, from Cynthia and Steve Erickson. These donations will be posted on, on our website, and we appreciate the generosity, and thank you very much. We have a community that supports the city they live in, which is a really good feeling.
I'll move that we accept the donations.
All right. In a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Okay. Correspondence and petitions? Is there anything in addition to what we found on the dais tonight?
There is none.
Okay. We have minutes from the, from the Park and Rec Recreation Commission tonight, that was part of our packet, so we received those. Aviation noise update, a short one. I went to the Noise Oversight Committee meeting yesterday, and it had some nice highlights in it. The airport just continues to improve. There was an article in the paper today that it's the eighth highest, best airport in the, in North America. So that's pretty cool. But it is, it's, it's amazing what's happening out there, and it's, it's all happening while people are getting through the airport. Okay. The next meeting of the NOC is an evening meeting, kind of mixing up the times a little bit to try to be as accessible to the public as possible, Wednesday, November 28th at 6:30 in the evening. Okay, that's what I have. Anything additional to that?
No.
Okay. Then we will go to mayor and council comments, and we'll start with Member Fisher.
I don't have much, other than to say I've, I've themed my weekend to be about emergency services, so...
Oh, are you going?
On Friday night, I am doing a ride-along with the Police Department. I'm super excited about that. It's homecoming night, it should be really exciting.
Yeah, that's right.
We'll see what kind of trouble people get in out there. And then on Sunday, I don't know how many of you are doing the Fire Ops 101, but I am really excited about that as well. So I'm going to learn a lot this weekend, looking forward to it.
Cool. Kevin?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
All right. Member Stewart?
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I attended the, had a nice invitation from the Edina Athletic Boosters Association for a picnic before the Hornet football game on September 7th. The Hornets played Rosemont that night, Rosemount that night, and won 17 to 14, as I recall. The, the key play being the field goal that gave the Hornets the lead. The field goal was not a long field goal, but it was kicked as a line drive. It went right at the crossbar, hit the crossbar, and rolled over.
Wow.
So the result is what counts. It was very exciting. We had Fall Into the Arts on the weekend of September 7th to 9th, which is a great event. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters and Jewish Community Action. They co-hosted a candidate forum here at City Hall on Monday night. It's a great opportunity for people to learn more about the candidates, so, and that is videotaped somewhere, I think. And then coming up, this coming weekend, on Sunday, is Open Streets. So both an invitation for people to come out to Open Streets, but also a caution if you're intending to drive on 50th Street, because the street will be closed from 1:00 to 5:00 on Sunday, so that we can have the Open Streets event. And I'm planning to go to that, and I will not therefore be able to be at the training session that Member Fisher is attending. And then coming up on Monday, I think it's October the 2nd, there's a ribbon cutting for the Solar Garden at the Public Works Building that'll be at 4:00 in the afternoon, October 1st, I'm sorry. 4:00 in the afternoon on October 1st, Monday, at the Public Works Building. Thank you.
All right. I have a couple of things. Yes, Fall Into the Arts was a great event. It was great weather, it was packed, and heard lots of good things from the artists about the successes they were having and what fun they have. It's an art fair that's not on a street, so they really do, they really do enjoy just the peacefulness of an art fair that doesn't have the busyness of being on France Avenue or at, or on a street in uptown. I did one of my favorite things this, today. I was at Creek Valley School this morning. This is the week, this is Constitution Week. So the last time we met, there was a resolution recognizing Constitution Week, and that is this week. So I was at Creek Valley School with second graders presenting, presentation on the US Constitution. And so we talked about the three branches of government. We broke down the first sentence of the Constitution. And so that is, I mean, it's just a great illustration. And having Hamilton in town, we have the concept of being in the room, so I used that today. I said, imagine, this is... I said, imagine, this is 1778, and you are in the room. So it was really cool. And the critical thinking of seven-year-olds related to the Constitution, I was, it really just blows me away that, that I don't remember quite having that acuity at age seven. But, but anyway, it is my pleasure to sit in as Mayor Pro Tem this evening. Jim is on a much well-deserved vacation, so we hope he's having a great time, and wish him safe travels and a speedy return when, when he gets back. I think that's all I have. Let's see. All right. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. One, at our HRA meeting this week, this week, last, last week.
Last week.
Last week. We received a petition from Centennial Lakes HOA, and I should have responded to that time about the next steps, what happens, because we do, we all know there's, there are a number of folks that are interested in that. Mr. Yerem and, and his team, and I and others have been working on kind of discerning the situation out there for over a year, a couple of years now, actually. It's quite complex in terms of, of how many different HOAs there are, and how many different agreements for maintenance fees there are. We think it's important that you understand the totality of the, of the issue that's facing you. It's really not just, while it may be this one particular HOA, I think it would be difficult for you to grant what they're asking without granting it for others as well, or at least considering that. So we want to take some necessary time to do the analysis and bring that information back to you, and set up a time when, when we can do that, perhaps in a work session, and also include the folks who have been interested in this issue as well, so they can, so they can speak to you as well. So we are working on that. When will that happen? It's, it's, it's in our queue, I'll tell you that. So I think it's something that I could foresee happening in December or January. We do need to finish budget and CIP and some other issues, but we are working on that, After our last meeting, I was talking with Councilmember Staunton, and we talked about how we do community comment here. And it's oftentimes, community comment is made, sometimes staff will know the answer to a question that's posed, but frequently, we don't, because we don't know what the questions are that are coming at us for that night. We can't anticipate them all. And the question came, well, we can't anticipate them all, so maybe it's not fair to ask staff to answer them on the spot that night, but it should be fair for you to expect some kind of follow-up, and for a resident to expect some kind of follow-up two weeks later when we have another council meeting. So I'm going to add, under my comments, a kind of a standing item that I'm calling community comment follow-up, where we'll take, we'll take a look at what the questions are that are posed to us in, in community comment from the previous meeting, and I'll give you an update on what we know about those questions. Question, let's see, comment number one at our last meeting was from Lisa Lee from 6012 Shane Drive. And I looked at all these again today, just to familiarize myself, from Shane Drive. And she, she was concerned about the impact of some new on-street parking regs on Shane Drive. And if you'll recall, that was part of an overall approach to doing on-street parking changes in that neighborhood around the high school, because it was requested of us to do that by other residents, but not particularly Shane Drive. Right after that meeting, I think maybe in that same week, our engineer, Mr. Milner, visited with the neighbors on Shane Drive. He's had, so he's had a personal visit with them, and he's working through some ideas to alleviate some of the concerns they had. We're, we're doing that jointly with the Police Department. We'll probably get the ETC involved as well, and we'll bring something back to council and also to the residents to let you know what's happening. Mr. Lorenz had a number of questions and a lot of comments at the last meeting about public safety staffing. And he referenced a study that we did a couple of years ago, and, and he was right. We did do a study a couple of years ago. And it was with a group called the Novak Group, and we did it in 2016, and it started in 2016, it ended in 2017. And one of the points that Mr. Lorenz was trying to make is, what, what is the, you know, what are the barometers that regulate how much staffing we're going to do in, in police and, and fire over the years? And there are a couple, and they're, they're not things that you, will surprise you. On the police side, there is the concept of proactive policing, and that was a key metric in that study, if you'll recall. And proactive policing is that time when a police officer, patrol officer is, is in the field, and they're, and they're looking around, they're watching. They're not, they're not filling out a report, they're not in the station, they're not hauling somebody to jail, but they are doing kind of proactive police work in the community. And right now, we, we are able to look at on average basis, and we did some study as part of this study, that 40, about 49% of their time is used in proactive policing. And that's a high, that's a relatively high number. The International Chiefs of Police Association says a minimum should be about 33%. But the community, the community, this community is, is used to 49%. So that's kind of the level of, that's the service level that we think of in, in the Police Department. If you wanted, if we want to keep that 49% number kind of at or about that, where it is right now, particularly given the increase in workload, and I want to show you a graphic of that right now, close to right now. We will need to increase staff. If you're going to have, if you're going to keep service level where it is, and keep work, and workload keeps moving up, the only way you can keep that service level where it is, is to look at, is to look at increases in staff. In our Police Department, this is what our calls for service look like. And during that time period, from 2013 to 2017, we've had a 57% increase in calls for service between 2013 and 2017. 2018 is running a little ahead of pace right now with, with those, with that data. So given those, given that kind of trajectory of that line, it's probably, it's pretty likely to keep service levels where they are. If there, if there's not some kind of interceding increase in technology, which could change the way that productivity works, that we will, that I'll be proposing additional changes in staffing, increases in staffing in the Police Department in the near future. The study said that if, if that line continues to raise at that level, that we would add probably as much as 14 officers by the year 2022. I think that in his comments at the last meeting, Mr. Lorenz added, believed that we added four officers, that we did not. We had, we had three officers in 2017, the first staffing increase since 2009 in the Police Department. On the fire side, so, excuse me, on the police side, I'll tell you that what we'll continue to do, we'll continue to monitor activity levels, so we'll continue to monitor their calls for service. We'll continue to monitor what kind of their, their proactive policing metric is, and we'll share that with you during the budget process next year. On the fire side, again, one of the key response times is, is both the volume of calls that they have to respond to, and the response time that they have to respond to them. You can see they've had a similar increase, not quite the same rate. They've had a 23% increase in their calls for service from 2013 to 2018. But one of, two, there are two classifications of those calls, of that 5,841 calls, two classifications of calls that have increased dramatically, and they both have to do with mental health. Transport holds, which are mental health-related typically, have increased 259% from 2013 to 2017, and psychiatric emergency response has increased 111%. So those are very significant increases in time, because those two classifications of calls take a long time. They tie up, they tie up an ambulance crew for an exceedingly long, long period of time, which means that we often have to put a third ambulance into, into response if we're going to be able to respond to just the general call load that we have. We had not increased our staff in the last 10 years. In fact, we have increased in the last 10 years at a time when, when their, their workload has been going up pretty significantly. But we do have budget authorization in 2019 to add four new firefighter paramedics to, to our Fire Department. And we think that will make, that'll make a difference in how we can respond, because we'll be able to put Unit 3 into play easier and faster. It also provides more opportunity for training for, for folks that are on, on shift. They can do, do their training on shift. So that's, that's the response to, to some of Mr. Lorenz's questions and comments from last time. We had also, we had also comments from Nikki Williams from 3915 Morningside Road, and her comments were about a residential redevelopment project that had occurred next to her. She had had a, she detailed her experience with that, which was a bad experience. I think she also detailed that, that, that project, for the most part, met our standards in terms of what the city is there to inspect for. And it's, it's, it may be, sound curious as to how those two things can be simultaneously true, but they, they frequently are. And one of the things that we run into, and it's not uncommon, is for folks that are neighbors to these projects to wish that the city would take an advocacy position on their behalf to protect them from the redevelopment project. Our staff really approached these as, as regulators and, and law enforcement. So we, we're trying to balance the, what, what does it say in our, in our building code and our city code, and we're trying to enforce that. I think if we are going to become more protectors, or take a position where we're trying to protect one side of this, this issue from, from the other, we do need some, we will need some code change that allows us to take that kind of position. One of the things that we did this summer to kind of help build a rationale or a background for that, is we did a fairly extensive survey this, this past year of, of the new homeowners who are designing and having these homes built and moving into town, what their experience is with residential redevelopment. We, we did three years' worth of neighbors who live all the way around a residential redevelopment home, and got a lot of response back from them and what their experience is. And we also surveyed the neighbors, the builders, and got those. So we have those three different perspectives. So we're analyzing that data right now and trying to figure out what we can learn from it. And we think that could be helpful in answering some of the questions that Ms. Williams raised. And finally, Mr. Potts raised, really, his, his comments, he didn't have as many questions as he had comments, and those comments were more directed at council than they were at staff, and they were reminders about how important it is to act on the stormwater improvement plans that we've been talking about. And in his view, we've had enough public input and public engagement, we need to, to actually start building and doing something on the ground, and he thought that should happen ASAP. So that's the response of, of some of the questions, comments that we had from our last meeting, and we'll try to do this on a regular basis then, starting next time, too.
Madam Chair, if I can jump in?
Member Staunton?
So in the same spirit of following up on this, I want to share a couple of reactions, really to the last two items, that to me are both falling into this category of residential redevelopment, and, and how, what's that experience like for the folks who are in it, in particular, the neighbors? And, you know, I think anecdotally, we as council members would probably tell you that we hear more from the neighborhoods where you've got narrower lots, so, you know, folks are closer together. It's on the 50-foot lots, or the 60-foot, or the 40-foot lots, not the 150-foot lots, although there's some issues with those. But to me, the survey data is very important, because I think we should take some action, especially on things that are repetitious. And the ones that I anecdotally have heard are, you know, actions in the excavation process that are causing issues with the neighboring property, whether that's undermining the integrity of a driveway, or damaging the roots of a tree, or those kinds of things. And then drainage is the other big one. And I think Ms. Williams and Mr. Potts both advocate pretty, you know, they tell pretty compelling stories about how that happens. And, and I think that there, we ought to have some, you know, it seems to me, at least within whatever authority we've got, we ought to adopt some rules that make it clear what you can't do when you're doing a new project, or what you, what you have to do to protect that neighboring property, so that we can enforce that, and we can make it so that, that folks aren't, you know, having their driveway cave in, or having, or having drainage onto their property from the next door neighboring property. I mean, these are pretty, when we, when we do the survey, if we can come up with the top three or four, we should target those and, and adopt something and do it quickly, and then get on it, because we have the personnel to follow up on this, but we just need to be clear with the builders about what those rules are.
Yes.
Member Stewart?
Thank you. If I may piggyback on that, I, I agree wholeheartedly in those suggestions. I would also like to see us have, I don't think we currently have any particular requirements regarding pervious versus impervious services, but I'd like to have a, set a standard to sort of sustain that, which is of course related to the groundwater issue, the, the stormwater issue. I think we could do a lot by having some requirements around that, that can be enforced. And then, I believe staff does a good job of enforcing. We want to, one of the recurring issues that we do have sometimes is, people feel that staff has not enforced in their particular situation. So we want to give staff the tools that they need to, to ensure that, first of all, there's clarity in terms of those requirements, so that it's not ambiguous. But there are some developers who seem to be recurring, people that we get complaints about. And, and I don't want to try to convict people somehow without evidence, but I think there are times when we can be more vigilant and try to ensure that, that things don't go badly and have it get too far down the path. I, I don't have great suggestions for exactly how to do that, but I think it's an issue.
Yeah, and I think that when you see this data, some of it which is, you know, is kind of regular survey data, but there's also a lot of, of comments where we can get, you can get a lot of anecdotal experience from it as well. We'll kind of lead you into some particular problem areas that seem to occur, even in sites that are well-managed.
All right. Member Fisher?
So just to keep adding on, so Scott, you know, we've, we've had multiple conversations over the last year about situations, and I know I've been trying to propose ideas, and most of them run up against state statute and, and, you know, licensing that happens at a different level and all that. But what I think would be great is when you, and I'm really looking forward to seeing this survey data, and perhaps if you could set up, whether it's a work session, or, or, you know, it could be right here, it'd be fine, where we can take in that data and then brainstorm or talk about different ways we could make improvements. And I know you've, you're thinking about, and your staff's thinking about those ideas as well. But I think, you know, both as it relates to contractor, we'll call it contractor behavior, and then also the whole stormwater thing, and then, and amount of coverage on site, I think there are, you know, multiple prongs we can look at here. But I still, you know, and I've said this 100 times, you know, if a contractor comes in for the first time and messes up, shame on them. If they come and do it the second time, it's shame on us. We're allowing bad behavior to happen multiple times, and we just have to figure that out.
Yeah, we do hear some of those stories over and over, and it is, it is troubling, And that is a hard nut to crack, too, because the resident who is improving their home And that is a hard nut to crack, too, because the resident who is improving their home, you want them to have what they need to have to accomplish what they want to accomplish, and you want to protect the residents in the area as well. So, more to come on that, I'm sure. All right. Well, we have a schedule of meetings and events coming up, so that's provided to you, updated schedule. So, anything else? Otherwise, we've completed our work here, and thanks, everybody. We're adjourned.